This month's meeting of the Planning Commission, it is November 24th at 7:30 PM on the dot. Thank you everyone for being here on time. I'm Keith Landa as senior member of the commission, not really chair. I will take to call the meeting to order. And I mean, can we now rise for the Fledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey there, no appointments for tonight. Everyone is here among the full members and the alternates. As a first order of business, we are currently without a chair. I will just make a note that technically by the bylaws, our meeting in December is when we actually elect officials. But it's probably a good idea to have a chair for the commission. So we'll do a provisional election this evening and then ratify it at the December meeting. So do we have any nominations for chair?
I'd like to nominate you, Keith Landa.
Second. Do we have any other nominations? Can I have a motion to close nominations?
Motion to close nominations.
Second.
Second, discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So I skipped over, we don't have a secretary slash vice chair either. So I'm appointing Chris McCartney as temporary secretary and.
And I have a request.
Yeah.
Can I get everyone's name?
Yes, so let's do introductions. Let's start, actually Evan, why don't you start us off?
How we doing folks? So I'm an enforcement officer, Evan White, also for as an officer. How's everybody doing? And all you members welcome, thank you.
Good.
Tom Quigley, alternate Board of Planning Board.
Tom.
Tom Marino, Planning Board.
Commission.
Jenna Alvedi, Planning Commission Member.
Keith Landa, member of the commission.
Noel Mannion, Planning Commission.
Sue Blank, Planning Commission.
I'm Chris McCartney, alternate Planning Commission.
Tim Belavita, alternate Planning Commission.
Okay. We do need to elect secretary vice chair, but all of our other members, full members of the commission are brand new. So I don't necessarily want to put you on the spot to necessarily step forward right now this evening unless someone is dying to be the secretary vice chair. What is the secretary vice chair? It is one position. It is secretary. We currently don't have a staff secretary for the commission. So the secretary would fulfill that role until if and when we decide to do a search for a secretary. And as vice chair, the vice chair steps in for the chair when the chair is not available.
Okay.
Okay, so we will pen to that until the next meeting in December, think about it. I do want to welcome all of the new members, a lot of new faces on the board. Which is why one of the main agenda items I want to do this evening is to provide kind of an orientation about the Planning Commission to all of you. And we'll deal that in a minute or two. I do want to say, I think most of you have set up your New Fairfield email address. Okay, so we really will want to use the PC at newfairfieldct.gov as our communication channel. So I will be using that to send out reminders like I did yesterday, I believe. And good. Our first order of business is to approve the minutes from the October meeting, which are posted on the website. Basically, we didn't have a lot of business last month. We did a positive eight twenty-four referral on the sale of town properties. And we'll talk about what an eight twenty-four referral is a little bit later in the show this evening. And we approved the calendar for next year. So we're a little, we were a little bit ahead of some of the other boards and commissions. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look at the minutes. I did send out a link to them. Any, is there any discussion over the minutes?
You said you're going to go over to eight twenty-four refer, referral?
That'll be part of the orientation.
That was one question I had.
Seeing no discussion, does anyone willing to move to approve the minutes?
I'll move to. Yep.
I move we approve the minutes.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, Sue and then Jenna. I think we've discussed the minutes as much as they need to be discussed. All those in favor, full members say aye. Okay, minutes are approved. Correspondence and announcements, I have none. Any announcements from any of the other commission members? Okay, so at this point, we will open it up for public comment.
Good evening, it's nice to see the new faces. It's weird that it just happens just like that, but it's bizarre. Nice to meet you, Charco Ridge East. Little bit of information that from my perspective.
Did you introduce yourself?
Jennifer Pappas, Charco Ridge East.
Yep.
Yeah, if this town has any intent to remain an independent municipality, everyone needs to really pay attention. HB eight zero zero two is eight thirty G on steroids. Comply or lose funding from the state until you decide to comply. That's how it works. Be conscious of the build and the impact it will have on the taxpayers in this town. I'd like to know how much money has been dished out so far over the bus lot. Has the consolidated option cost us the same amount if it would have been put at the high school at this point? It still has to pass zoning. The Board of Education hired 20 new certified staff members this year, as noted at their August 21st, 2025 board meeting. Hidden Valley is full of cars. Is it students, is it staff overflow? No idea, but I question if additional parking needs were taken into account with the school growth and the build. The town P O C D adopted in twelve twenty-one twenty-four, page forty-nine, shows the potential for desirable trail connection behind the schools. Perhaps the cell tower location should be reconsidered adding overflow parking spaces. Maybe move the dog park there as well and put the buses at the high school. Where are people going to park in New Fairfield for the Marjory Trail? Looking at the P O C D, page ten, land use pattern, there is no space for a parking lot downtown. Plaza stores have an allocated amount of spots for business purposes. You can confirm that with zoning. Bigger builds mean more parking. The need should be addressed as a whole and put into the right space. No one wants to fight over parking lots again. What is best for this town? Just my two cents, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we will close public comment. We have no old business carrying over from last time. So let me take a little bit of time to just provide a little bit of orientation on the planning process, Planning Commission responsibilities, different state statutes. So first of all, Quentin, if you could scroll down one page. Can you blow that up a little bit? Thanks. I put together a short little two-page primer that was posted with the agenda for the meeting this time. It's, if you click, Quentin, you see that bold chapter one twenty-six link there? Can you pull up that webpage? So this is what the chapter one twenty-six of the state statutes looks like. It's what controls the, it's the framework for the operations of planning. Step at the top for a minute, Quentin. It's a framework for municipal planning commissions. It is a kind of a traditional webpage. It's got a whole ton of content, text-based, got a bunch of links at the top. The chapter is broken down into different sections. And there are a few of those that I do want to call out. So chapter one twenty-six is all about planning commissions. Chapter one twenty-six A is all about affordable housing. And we'll, we'll look at that in the primer as well. So go ahead and close this webpage, Quentin, let's go back to the, to the doc. So. Just pull it up on my computer.
Oh, I have it right here.
Yeah, so. Basically, you know, the purpose of a planning commission is to really provide a strategic planning framework for the town. That is broken down into a number of these different sections. I won't go through all of the legal E's in sections eight nineteen through eight twenty-two. But basically, you know, we do have in New Fairfield, a situation where we have a planning commission and a zoning commission that is separate. Some towns have those combined together. So there are different ways of organizing the planning and zoning process. If we look at the core responsibilities of the planning commission, there are three sections I do want to highlight. One is eight dash twenty-three. So go down a little bit, Quentin. This is the framework for doing the plan of conservation and development. This is the strategic plan for all of our towns. Has to be updated at least once every 10 years. Can be updated more frequently than that, but if it's, if it's more than 10 years old, then the town is out of compliance and is not available for certain funding that comes from the state. So it addresses housing, economic development, infrastructure, open space, energy conservation, all of that. We went through a planning process the last couple of years to approve our latest round of the plan of conservation and develop, P O C D, as you'll hear it referred to, last December, as Jennifer referenced. Following a fair amount of public comment, hearings, outreach to boards and commissions, surveys on the website, all of that stuff went into a process that came up with a really pretty good P O C D, in my opinion. Which unfortunately has been kind of sitting on the shelf since last December. So that's one of the things I want to change as the Planning Commission goes forward. So that's, that's clearly a major responsibility for the Planning Commission. Section eight dash twenty-four, the eight twenty-four referral, Tom, that you question, you had a question about. That is the role of a planning commission when the town decides to do something in development-related, public improvements that involve town properties. Those proposals have to come before the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission can either return a positive referral or a negative referral or not act at all. If the Planning Commission doesn't act, that's the same as a positive referral. A negative referral on the part of the Planning Commission doesn't stop the town from going forward with some infrastructure development. But it does put different routes that have to be followed in that process. So it's, it's another set of eyes on proposed town improvements. And the sole framework for the Planning Commission is, does this proposed improvement in the town infrastructure or whatever is being proposed, is that consistent with the P O C D or not? Can't, the Planning Commission has no scope to go into other aspects. It's just, this is being proposed for the town, does it contravene or does it agree with the P O C D? And so last month, there was a proposal to sell a couple of really teeny tiny town properties to the neighboring property owner. Since that was sale of town properties, it had to come before the Planning Commission. And we did a positive referral. So that's what was going on in the minutes for that.
Thank you.
Question, what does a positive referral, what form does that take?
A letter back to the first selectman, basically. We met, we reviewed the whatever documentation. In the case of the sale of these two postage stamped properties. We had the, the tax cards, we had the letter from the homeowner. The homeowner actually provided, it was not testimony because it wasn't a hearing, but provided their, you know, what they were trying to do, what they'd done in the neighborhood in the past. And so, you know, the past chair of the Planning Commission would have written a letter to the past first selectman at that point saying, you know, we provide a positive eight twenty-four referral.
Okay, thank you.
And the terminology of a positive referral means we approved it and we're sending it on?
Yes, we think that this is consistent with the P O C D.
Keith? Question on new business. If you get a piece of new business, you can rule on it at that particular meeting. You do not have to give the public a breather of fourteen days, et cetera, and then rule on it?
Yes, that is the case for the Planning Commission.
Okay, different from what?
Yeah, definitely from the wetlands.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a question on the referrals. So if, if it's a no or you think it doesn't align, can there be a back and forth? Can you suggest things or not? Is it more adjusted?
Trying to think if we've had a no in recent history. I mean, a negative referral would have to be transmitted back to the first selectman. Otherwise, there's no action from coming out of the commission. Therefore, it would be default into a positive referral.
Yeah.
So if there were something to come forward before the board and it was a negative referral, I think we would probably want to explain why. We thought that was not consistent with the P O C D. And then it's up to the town executives, you know, the first, the board of selectmen and others to say, now we're going to go forward the way it is or, well, let's think about that. But not, it's not a formal back and forth.
Okay.
But I think any kind of decisions that we send forward, we should have some rationale for.
Okay, thank you.
Eight twenty-five through eight twenty-six D talks about subdivision and re-subdivision. We get a little bit of that activity, not a lot in recent times, Evan, that.
Not as much as I get it.
I mean, there's not a lot, not a lot to continue to divvy up. I will say that these decisions about making subdivisions or re-subdividing a subdivision, actually, I think, Evan, you can do twice.
Three times, the first cut, you have the right to three cuts of the property, the first cut, initially done by your zoning enforcement officer. Then followed by your subdivision, which Planning Commission, you folks have the right to, you can have it go to a public hearing. It's not required. And then third and final is a re-subdivision, which is automatic public hearing.
Yep, yep. So I mean, under that, we, as a planning commission, we are tasked in state statute to look at, you know, the layout of the roads and drainage and so forth. There are other commissions that will also look at things like that, like conservation and the wetlands and so forth. I will say that decisions around subdivisions, re-subdivisions, and revoking subdivisions, which we've had one aspect of that in recent times. They do have implications for the town's grand list, and so much of our, our grand list is personal, is real estate. And so obviously, if you subdivide a property, there's more opportunities for dwellings to be built on more pieces of property than fewer pieces of property. And so that will have an eventual impact on the grand list. Okay, so that's eight twenty-three, P O C D, eight twenty-four, municipal, eight twenty-five, subdivisions. We look at chapter one twenty-six A, which is the affordable housing statutes. There are two sections that are most important, I think, for our work. One is the eight thirty G, which applies when a town, such as New Fairfield, has less than 10% of its housing stock is affordable. And any sort of negative vote by any of the boards and commissions in the town on a housing proposal under these circumstances, the developer does have the opportunity to file an eight thirty G appeal, in which case the burden approved and then switches over to the town. The town really has to, whether, whether it's the Planning Commission, zoning, or whomever, it's really becomes incumbent on the town to have specific reasons around health and safety and a number of other finite aspects to, to say, no, we really, we've got a legitimate reason for, for denying this application. We haven't had a lot of that activity. Hopefully, most of our boards try to work. Hopefully, most of our boards try to work with our developers. And so, we mostly have been able, as a town, I think, to work things out more amicably than going through the eight three G appeals procedure, but it is there. I think more important for our long-term planning is eight thirty J, which is a requirement for all of our towns to develop an affordable housing plan. And if Fairfield does have an affordable housing plan, it was also approved about last December. So it's been in place about the same time as our P O C D. So, I mean, you can read through the bullet points here. I do have some links at the bottom of this document. There's a link, obviously, to chapter one twenty-six, one twenty-six A, a link to our P O C D, a link to New Fairfield's Housing Authorability Plan. Hopefully, we'll all be pretty familiar and comfortable with those documents going forward. I will say, if you look at the actual language in chapter one twenty-six and the language in chapter one twenty-six A, you can tell that a majority of the government in Hartford is made up of lawyers, because it really, that's what it reads like. I will share around, I put the chapter one twenty-six and one twenty-six A links into a Google Notebook. So, Google Notebook has ingested all that content, which is, and then it's nice, it has a chat interface, you can actually ask questions of the documents. And the other thing that is kind of wonky is that you can create a podcast on the fly, having a couple of podcasters talking through the documents.
Wow.
Yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of fun.
Is that on the shared drive?
Uh, it, no, I did it in my Google account. So it is, and it's a Google Notebook, so it really can't be in the shared drive. But I've made it public, I'll share around that link, you can play with it.
Thank you.
You know, I did listen, the podcasts come out about, you know, 15 minutes, they're, they're, well, today, we're going to do a deeper dive into Connecticut municipal planning, you know? And so, they talk back and forth, and kind of like they're going through the statutes. And I will have, I will say that, listening to that podcast, there were a couple of things that they pointed out that I hadn't really actually come across before, so.
Cool.
I'll share it around, you can, you can make it what it is.
Question, on the appeal process, you say the town must prove its decisions. Do we prove that to a state authority, or is it appealed to a state authority beyond us?
Yeah, Evan, can you help me out on this? The details of an eight thirty G appeal, how did, I mean, I know that they're, one of the links I provided is a, the Connecticut Department of Housing maintains a list of all the affordable housing appeals. So I would assume that the developer who is denied has to make their appeals to the Department of Housing.
Yes, that is correct, yep. I'd just have to double-check it in the 15 to 30 day.
And then they'll go through a process, yeah. But as part of that, I mean, we'd have to say, you know, we really can't approve this because it's going to have this really deleterious impact on public health, or things like that.
Public health and safety.
Public health and safety, yeah. I did include in the packet, if you scroll down a little bit, Clinton, Quinton, the next several pages are the bylaws for the Planning Commission. Bylaws are already up on the town website, but the bylaws on the town website is a PDF scan that acts, of an old type-written document that's got all this notation over it. It's not been OCR, so there's no recognition of the text. It is definitely not titled to Digital Accessibility Compliant. And so, I'm hoping to get that old, what I did was, I took the document, took it into Acrobat, did the text recognition process, so I could get rid of all the garbage. I mean, the way it is, that's, the document we have on the town website right now is just zero-screen, readable, compatible.
Yeah, it's not ADA.
It is not ADA compliant at all. So I had to take it into Acrobat, I pulled the text out, put that text into Word, so I could format it up with all the appropriate header tags and all the other accessibility features, exported it back to a PDF, took it into Acrobat one more time to do the final cleanup, and that's what's incorporated here into this packet. So hopefully, we'll get a more accessible version up on the website soon. But, I mean, it is worth being familiar with the bylaws. Our December meeting is also the time when we would, let's see, it says here, we can really amend the bylaws at any time, but it does, the bylaws do highlight the December meeting as the time for doing the elections and putting forward, you know, this is a time each year to take a look at the bylaws. And so I've got some things that I would like to propose and we deal with next meeting, but I want you all to look over the bylaws and see, you know, what needs to be brought up to date. I don't know how you're all, how comfortable you all are with the plural "they", but it really bugs me these days to see a, an assumption that the chair and the vice chair of the commission will be "he".
I did notice that when I read them, yeah.
Yeah, so, there's some things that we can think about updating.
A question about the term "bylaws", should it be regulations?
No, these really are the bylaws. These are kind of the, I mean, there's a state statute, but this is, the bylaws, you know, speaking as a parliamentarian, these are, are, this is our foundational document about how we go about, you got it? Okay, any questions of anything so far?
So we're going to be talking about this in December, the bylaws?
Yeah, well, to the extent that we want, we, to the extent that all of you think, oh, you know, this is something that really should be updated.
Just a comment, you did an excellent job here, Keith. You put a lot of work into the, awful easy for me to go through the original stuff, and thank you.
Yeah, so I also want to thank Evan for bringing.
Yes, thank you.
A bunch of hard copies of the P O C D. I will take some time this evening to provide an overview, because, you know, Chris and I did live with the process for a couple of, a good 18 months, maybe, to put the P O C D together. I just want to give you some highlights, and then send you all off with the assignment to, you know, look through the P O C D in more detail. Because as I've said, and Quinton, why don't you go down into the slides part? Yeah, and now, yes, there's good. So as I said, you know, I think we came up with a really good P O C D. It fits our town, it fits the culture of our town, it has some great ideas about ways going forward. As, I think, as I mentioned when going over the state statutes, it's required that the town update the P O C D every 10 years. Stay up on that slide there, Quinton, for a minute. We were very intentional when we put the P O C D together this time that it be put together kind of as a modular document, so that as we actually, you know, accomplish things, if there were sections that either didn't, weren't relevant anymore, or that we'd made progress on, we needed to update, that we could actually slip in updated versions of it. So as I said, it guides land use, infrastructure, and so forth, high-level vision, balanced growth, conservation. So it's Plan of Conservation and Development, right? And so, economic development, sustainability of the town, very important, but also conservation, especially for a town like New Fairfield, maintaining open spaces and the community ambiance and so forth, very important for our town. Next slide, Quinton. So, do take a look at the introduction section of the plan. Does provide some really good background information. You know, obviously, New Fairfield is not growing, it's not, we're not doubling our size every decade, right? There's been a long-term trend to, for population decline a little bit. Meeting age in town over the last several decades has gone up quite a bit. So we have an aging town. We did see some young families move in during COVID. And, you know, hopefully with the new schools, we can continue that process going forward. But the demographics of New Fairfield are important framework for thinking about, you know, what we need to do going forward. We have very homogeneous housing stock. So much of our town is either two-acre R88 lots or one-acre R44 lots. We have a very limited couple of zones of economic activity. We're mostly a residential community. A lot of our lots, especially in the lake communities, are actually not in compliance with those zoning regulations that are governed the R44 and R88. And in terms of what people liked about New Fairfield in terms of the survey responses, the character of the town, a lot of positive feedback about the schools, the outdoor amenities. Those are the things that people liked and wanted to, wanted to preserve. What came up time and time again in terms of needing work, we're, you know, making sure that our facilities, public works and so forth are maintained. A lot of focus on business and economic development in the town center and what we can do to ensure that people can continue living in New Fairfield by addressing housing affordability issues. Okay, so Quinton, why don't you go down to next? And Chris, you know, pop in anytime you want to make comments, because you were a part of this process, and I know, Tom, you've created out parts. We've got two Toms sitting next to each other, so it's. In terms of the framework, as I said, the idea was to make this modular so that we could update it more easily and not wait to, wait a whole 10 years and have this additional Herculean effort to go through again. Each of the sections of the P O C D itself is basically, has some background and introduction information around that section, like, you know, going back to the Economic Development Town Center. There would be a couple of pages, you know, providing the framework, the setting for discussing that. Then there would be policies and action steps. And, yeah, if you look at, at any one of these pages, like page 34, which deals with, which deals with enhancing the town center, okay? So if you look at page 34, which is not going to be up on the screen for people watching from home, but go to the P O C D on the website, talks about the overall goal for the town center, the economic development goal. It identifies who the lead agencies are. And then the difference between policies and action steps. Policies are sort of the ongoing framework that, you know, anytime something comes before the zoning commission or the Planning Commission, or before the Board of Selectmen, ideally, those policies related to that topic would kind of set the background framework. Action steps are actually things that are recommendations for the town to do to implement improvements or to implement projects going forward. And so, and for all of those, we went through and we identified the lead agency, whether it's the Board of Selectmen or Board of Finance, or Planning Commission, or Conservation in the Wetlands, and we identified partners. And so, for the action step to undertake a comprehensive town center study, Planning Commission has been set as the lead agency for that. But we ideally would be working with the zoning commission and the Economic Development Commission. That's the difference between leaders and partners. And I feel like I'm rambling a lot, so people have questions.
I have a question. At some point, it's developed for the P O C D, and it's given to a partner. At some point in time, the Planning Commission is not part of it once it's gone into implementation. But I see here, the Planning Commission is everywhere.
On that particular one, yes.
Okay, why?
If you go back, if you, actually, Tom, let me, let me go down a couple of slides. And we'll see, we'll see core strategies, main strategies, where Planning Commission doesn't have much to do with it at all.
Yeah, because at some point, they have to just say, okay, you've accepted, here's the thing you need to do, we're finished.
Yep.
As long as you follow our plan, as outlined in this.
Yeah, although there is an ongoing role for the Planning Commission in terms of assessment and annuals.
Making sure it's fine.
No, stay back up one, okay. So, there are four main strategies that were identified. Developing and maintaining community facilities and services, the town center, as we've been talking about, housing options, and open spaces and trails. And then, in addition to those main strategies, there were, there are sections for some other strategies, dealing with natural resources, assets and ambiance, sustainability and resilience, transportation, utility infrastructure. Utility infrastructure, for example, it's clearly important, but it's not going to be that shiny new thing that you hang your P O C D on, right? So, you know, in all of our conversations, all of our outreach to folks, community facilities and services, town center, housing, and open space, they, those are really the four things that kept coming up time and time again, yeah.
What page is that on?
This would be page, well, I took the little graphic on the left side from page 17. And.
This is more than one.
What's that?
This is in the one we have.
That's where it is.
Yeah, so it'll be a scavenger hunt, you can go through my slides and booklet. But yeah, there is a section on the main strategies, that's section three of the P O C D. Section four is the other strategies, so if you just go through, you know, when you get to section three, it'll all be about those four, those four things. The next section will be around those five additional focus areas. And so.
So you pulled that out of here?
Yeah, I did a lot, I had it up on my computer, I did a lot of screenshots and.
Page 16.
Yeah, just have something visual to talk about. So Quinton, let's go down to the next slide. We'll, I don't necessarily want to spend a lot of time drilling down because I think we want all of you to have time to go through the P O C D and do the kind of drilling down next time. But just some overview comments. On section 3-1, which is Address Community Facilities and Services, that's a lot going to be the Board of Selectmen, the Permanent Building Committee, Board of Finance in terms of capital planning, the First Selectmen in terms of grant funding. And, and for this section of the POCD, we, we don't have a starring role. It's the Planning Commission. We kind of set the framework, but.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah. Whereas if you go to the next slide for enhanced town center and economic development in 3.2. Quentin? Sorry. It's, it's small print, but if you look at the lead agencies, Planning Commission, Zoning Commission and Economic Development Commission are the main players for that. And so, especially if you look at a number of the action steps in red on the right-hand side, when you take a look at these slides and blow them up, you know, when you look into them at home, you scroll over to the right, you'll see that Planning Commission and Zoning Commission are, are key leaders in a number of the action steps in this area.
Leaders.
Yeah, and so, I mean, the things that I would, would point out for Planning Commission is we made a recommendation that we should do a town center study. And Planning Commission would be, you know, the lead agency on that. Maybe setting up a committee to help carry that out. Candlewood Corners is a secondary locus of economic activity. So, I mean, those are a couple of areas where the Planning Commission and the Zoning Commission can really look into what can we do to facilitate a climate for economic development going forward. Diversity, diversify our housing portfolio. Again, we don't have a big part in, so 3.3, Quentin, down to the next page. Planning Commission doesn't have a starring role in this either. It's more zoning and a housing opportunities committee if we establish one permanently. And then for preserve open space and extend trails in 3.4. One thing on the Planning Commission docket is to think about developing a conservation development framework. So we can talk about what that means. I will say that after a lot of our conversation, the idea of a trail system as a way to unify the, the open space amenities in town came up time and time again. So. Again, I, I would ask you all to, you know, do a little bit of a deeper dive into the POCD between now and our December meeting. Look through all of these sections. Because one thing we need to do, and Quentin, if you go to the next slide, any kind of plan like this is only as good as its implementation, right? So we did all this work. We came up with this really great plan. And it's been kind of sitting on the shelf for the last 10 months, right? And so one of the things I want us to do is think, well, how do, what do we as a Planning Commission, what do we do to push the, to move the process forward? And so that's what I want to start our conversation on next month.
I have a question. Going back to the trails.
Yep.
You talked about, there was input that the trails would be a way to bring the town together. Can you explain that a little more?
Sure, I mean, there are already bits and pieces of a trail system scattered throughout town.
Right.
You know, a lot of them are, are trails that would be good for me if I'm feeling like I want to do some hiking. But they aren't necessarily good trails for families with young kids or for biking or for the cross-country runners from the high school. So by doing some additions, some strategic development of trails, we can, we could theoretically put together a trail system that, you know, goes from New York to.
Boston.
Well, we, we don't have trails to Boston. But, I mean, yeah, we could basically tie together all of New Fairfield with these.
So that's what you're kind of, you got input from that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was part of the responses that we got.
That's right, yeah.
The information from the surveys and things that we got, and it was all compiled.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for, okay, thank you.
But if you can kind of imagine, people are coming to the senior center and they're looking for places to walk. Being able to get from point A to point B in town is not easy, even if you're just going from here and then trying to cross over to go over.
Can't do it.
Yeah, it's kind of tricky.
So, yeah, we really have to take the lead in pushing the process forward, making sure that this does become a plan that actually has an impact on the town, provides a framework for the long-term sustainable development of the town.
Are we going to talk about that in December?
Yeah. So I do want to give you all a chance to, you know, go through the plan in more detail. What I would hope we can start the conversation in December is, well, this is a 10-year plan. We don't do everything in the first year. In fact, we don't do anything in the first 10 months, but.
That's all done.
That's all.
You didn't do anything yet, now we got to start it.
Water under the bridge, but I mean, what?
I think it's very important for us to make sure this is visible to the other boards, especially since we've called them out and made them leaders.
Definitely.
Especially when they're starting to think about their budgets and what that might mean to their budgets, coming into budget season.
So we are a little bit behind the curve. I mean, it would have been nice to have started some of this outreach to boards some months ago.
Have they seen this at all?
One minute.
Yeah.
It's public, but have they looked?
In, in developing the process, there was a specific outreach to every board. What are your priorities, you know, that was all.
We had listening sessions, multiple of them with different boards, and they all came before us with their concerns. And it might be something that we might want to consider now that after the election we have new people on boards, maybe we could reach out to each of them and point out, please go through the POCD and find where you're called out.
Right. And it, and actually, it's, it's easy to do, and I'll show that in, in a minute. I did kind of want us to get our house in order first before we start.
Going up to boards and say, oh, by the way, you're on the hook for.
We've been waiting 10 months to hear from you.
You only have 12 meetings a year.
Right.
So how much can we do in 12 meetings? So, yeah.
So we will, I guess the messaging will be, we're, we're, we're starting to push on the POCD. We are working to get our act together, but in the meantime, this is what you should be thinking about. And if you go to the next slide, Quentin, if you, if you look further back in the POCD, in the implementation part, takes all of the bits and pieces that were, you know, all of the places where Planning Commission was mentioned in, you know, section 3.1, 3.2, 3.3, 3.4, 4.1, so forth, collects them all together on the one page, or maybe a couple of pages. But there's a nice chart on one of the pages. And so for the Planning Commission, what the POCD called out, that doesn't necessarily have to be what we focus on right away, is the town center study, Candlewood Corners, conservation development framework, taking the lead on implementation. We are theoretically supposed to hold annual meetings reviewing how the POCD is coming along, which would theoretically be next month. So our, our annual meeting on the POCD next month will be a round two kickoff, I guess, rather than a review of progress on the POCD. So that's, you know, if you look in the, in the back pages of the POCD, you'll see what we thought should be on the plate for the Planning Commission. If you go to the next page, Quentin, obviously, planning should ideally work hand in hand with zoning. And so here is, you know, all the things that we put on the agenda for Zoning Commission. That village district designation is an interesting thing that came up during our conversation. So, you know, read through the POCD. There's actually a section of the state statutes that I should have, have linked in here. Was it 8.3? I'll have to look for it. There is a, you know, some statute language that we can, can share around. Zoning Commission has just gone through its own process of revising the zoning regs. They didn't get through all of the stuff that they wanted to, but they did a, a large section of it. Unfortunately, they didn't get to the compliance issue, right?
Yeah. Addressing issue of the non.
Non-conform, yeah, the non-conforming properties. So obviously, if we are trying to do something to diversify our housing stock to give residents in New Fairfield more different kinds of options and more affordable options, the zoning commission is going to be an important part of that. The POCD puts forward the possibility of maybe we can do a waterfront development district, which I think even might be a part, a part of, of addressing that non-conforming property issue. Yeah. So, I mean, definitely we should start having some conversations with the zoning commission, especially since they too have, as you mentioned, a lot of new members. Board of Selectmen, you know, funding, housing opportunities, obviously, in controlling, next page, Quentin. Obviously, in controlling the budget for the town, they have a big thing, a big part to play in community facilities, services, transportation, town infrastructure. So we need to be talking with the Board of Selectmen. And, and there are others that are called out as well. One more page, Quentin. You know, so Board of Finance, Water Pollution Control Agency. Conservation and in the wetlands, as you know, plays a big role in a lot of the open space, water quality aspects of the POCD. So fortunately, we have the chair of Conservation of the Wetlands along with the Planning Commission.
We're voting to next in December.
You think you're going to be off the hook? I mean, we, we have, Quentin, one more page. I mean, clearly, we've been having a conversation throughout all of this. I don't know if people have additional questions?
Maybe more of a comment. I know it was mentioned before, if we only have 12 meetings in a year, maybe in December, we can map out the next 10 and work backward, you know, where we want to end up and see what we need to get done at each meeting so we don't all.
Yeah, so looking forward on the agenda, there is member comments and future agenda items. And I'll put annual plan in December. So think about that. So again, do take time to look through the POCD. It probably would be worthwhile looking through the affordable housing plan as well so that you can see how the two plans fit together. Think about priorities. Think about how we should go about actually establishing what we think our priorities should be for the coming year. There are different ways of, of trying to prioritize. But if you just go through, if everyone comes with a, a list of, well, here are the things I think we can feasibly work on in the next year. Maybe that's the simplest way, and we'll have a conversation around there.
Feasibility.
Yeah, feasible, what's feasible? A combination of what's feasible and what will move the needle, I guess.
Yeah, it will have a big impact.
And we'll try to get a sense of priorities for the commission, and then we can map, see how that fits onto an annual schedule.
Awesome.
I mean, we've had a lot of meetings of the Planning Commission that were 12 minutes long, right?
Yeah.
Because we didn't put any business on the agenda.
It was just whatever was coming up in the town.
Yep.
It wasn't very proactive.
Yep. So I hope you're in for a different ride than that. Because I want the commission to be itself impactful.
Cool.
Right?
Is one of your partners, may I make a comment?
Sure.
Chris Hall, Selectmen Co-Zen. Budget season starts January.
Yep.
So I want to strongly suggest that you spend some time next month thinking about your budget. If there are, one of, i- i- if there are consultants that you want to engage, engage for the town center project, you need to ask for money for it.
Yep.
The other thing that you need to think about doing is, and, and it may be done for you if you don't do it, is to ask to set aside money every budget year to fund the next POCD.
Yep.
But budgets are important, and the process starts in January. It's actually, it's going to start in December. You're going to be filling out paperwork in December for the Board of Selectmen to go over in January with you on what your budget proposal is, why it is, why you're asking for money, if you're asking for money. Are you carrying out what you're doing? And if you do, you need more money to carry out what you're supposed to be doing? That sort of thing.
Yep.
Thank you.
And as a note, the last, last budget, we had requested money for a town study that got nixed. So we should make sure that's on our plate for that.
Yeah, so actually, Quentin, if you go down to the final slide of the packet, we have gotten the budget spreadsheet. And could you blow that up a little bit, focusing on the numbers in the middle, Quentin? Yeah, that's good. We, so this shows our actual expenditures as a commission over the last three previous budget cycles. Shows what's been approved for the current year, '25, '26. We have to before December, midway through the December to, actually, I have to see when that is compared to our meeting time. Anyway, our, our base, our baseline budget is essentially salaries. And salaries is basically funds we have spent in the past for commission secretary. Now, as I said, we're currently without a commission secretary. But we have approved for this year's budget $1,700 for that and $750 for materials and supplies for a budget of $2,450 for the current year.
Does that salaries also include what Chris was saying about hiring consultants?
No, this, that would be. It would, it, it, when we, when we hired the consultant for doing the POCD, it actually did not show up in the budget line in the Planning Commission. Yeah, with cap and on. But, you know, we had a request to build up that.
We would need that, though, would we here?
That would not be in what we would request here. We would, actually, the idea I had, since we have a fairly good relationship with the consultant who did the, the POCD, you know, without getting any, into any sort of contractual obligations, I would, I guess, like the commission's blessing to reach out to Glenn and say, do you have some example scope of work for a town center study that you could just share with us? And do you have, you know, of course, it might be a conflict of interest to ask him about consultants, so maybe I'll, I'll speak with the, the First Selectmen instead.
Westcott.
Westcott, yeah.
I have a question.
So, does this budget, I mean, it goes back to as early as twenty-twenty-two. Does this include the, the cost of the P O C D report?
No. It, uh, that was paid out under cap and non line, would not, was not.
Under what?
Uh, capital and non.
Oh, capital, okay.
Non, yeah.
So, if we wanted to start to build up our budget for future years, it would be baseline, like professional services, kind of general?
What I would suggest is, we know how much we spent, um, on consultant fees for the current Plan of Conservation Development. We have to do it in a decade. Yes, consulting fees are gonna be more expensive in a decade.
Yeah.
We've got, well, nine years now, um, to build up a fund. Uh, and so, you know, you take, we're gonna project, you know, fifty thousand, uh, in ten years' time to do another P O C D, divide by nine, and make a recommendation that the town start putting away that much money.
The town would be doing that, based on our recommendations.
Yeah, cause we don't, we don't have that kinda money in our budget. Twelve twenty-six, yeah. So, we will have, we will actually have our December meeting before then. So, we don't have to rush through and say, oh, are we going to?
We need to do this.
I mean, we could, we have a lot of, we have a pretty much brand-new commission. We could just roll over what we requested for this year. That's not necessarily very strategic. Um, we really need to have some thoughts about. How important is it for us to have a Commission Secretary as opposed to electing the Secretary-Vice Chair position? For something like Conservation in the Wetlands, where we're having lots of applications every month shuffled back and forth, really important to have, um, Julie, right?
Julie, yeah.
Yeah.
No, Lisa. Lisa, Lisa.
Oh, Julie is for my other, yeah.
Julie Black is the Secretary at the, um, building.
Yeah. So, um, we, over the last several years, have not seen that level of applications coming before planning.
No.
But, uh, and, but we have the funds, we should, we should, um, you know, decide, are we going to put out a job ad for a Recording Secretary for this year? Cause we already got the funds. So, let me, let me think about that, and we'll, we'll get the process going.
And it also might be a case that there's a Secretary that works with a different commission that might have to do.
Pick up some additional hours, yeah. So, um, that's in the packet for this, um, for this month's meeting. We have, we don't have to make the decisions on it tonight. We can finalize this on, at our next meeting and submit it electronically before twelve twenty-six, and be in good standing. Uh, in the meantime, um, I will reach out, I will reach out to Westcog. Uh, I have to get some contact information to get some, um, I, some example scope of work for our Town Center Study, and examples of consultants to reach out to. Um, I will bring that information to the December meeting. So, on the agenda for December.
Town Center Study Research, or whatever.
Okay. So, any final questions around new business?
I, I have a question. So, in terms of moving forward and, and setting priorities, um, are we, is this the forum? And this seems like the forum in which, sort of, like, decisions for, for moving ahead happen, but the deliberations that get us to that place, where we're able to say, as a committee, these, these are the top three, or the, whatever. Like, the, are there meetings that happen outside of these meetings? Or must they be sort of a planned, public meeting?
Um, so, um, we cannot meet, I mean, we could call a special meeting be- before our next December meeting if we think we need to have a conversation to get ready, uh, to fit into the board process. Uh, can I take a look at the calendar? A special meeting, you know, has to be noticed a certain amount of time ahead of time. Um, it, uh, would have an agenda. The, um, agenda would not be modifiable, okay? So, uh, but certainly, we could have a, a commission meeting before our this, regular December meeting, if we think that that is needed. Would we like that?
I mean, I think that, yeah, I think that there, we should be sitting and discussing these things and digging into the weeds a little bit. I mean, not just as individuals, but I think of the commission.
And the specific priorities and.
If this is the forum where that's supposed to happen, that's great. But it seems like if these are monthly meetings, we're already behind the eight ball, so.
Right. So, let me pull up.
When is our next meeting? Is it the fifteenth?
Well, I'm gonna pull up the town calendar.
December twenty-second is our next meeting.
It is the twenty-second, okay.
Twenty-second of December.
Yeah, and so, um, December eighth would be like splitting the difference between the November meeting and the December regular meeting. There is.
So, Wednesday?
What?
It's a Monday.
It's a Monday?
Mm-hmm.
Um, um, Parks and Rec is meeting in the Senior Center here from six to seven P M. I have no experience with their meetings to know if they run over.
Not generally.
Um, I, we could, we could schedule a special Planning Commission meeting for December eighth at seven thirty here, theoretically. Is that the sense of the commission that we want to do that?
I'll be absent.
So, I move we have a December eighth meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Seven thirty at, uh, here, Senior Center.
A second?
Providing it's available.
Second?
Who's seconded it?
Voting members, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I can make it.
Okay. Any, uh, was there, it was unanimous. So, I will, uh, I will get everything arranged.
I think it would be a pretty good idea.
Yeah. So, for the agenda for that?
For the agenda, um, discussing P O C D priorities and prioritizing them. It'll be a pretty simple agenda, cause it's a special meeting.
Okay.
But we should all make sure that we s- look at.
Yeah.
P O C D.
P O C D, look at the Housing Affordability Study. Come with ideas about priorities, come with ideas about what's, what's feasible and impactful for, um, for Planning Commission to focus on for the coming year. What are the priorities that we want to, um, um, send out to the other boards for the coming year? You know, rather than saying, oh, zoning commission, here, here's this whole long list of things for the next decade.
Right.
You know, what should we be recommending to the zoning commission? What should we be recommending to the Board of Selectmen?
Feasibility and practicality.
Yeah.
So, if I heard you, the agenda is laying out the P O C D priorities in terms of feasibility and impact?
Yep. For the Planning Commission and for other boards and commissions.
Um, could I suggest, so, I think we also need to come up with whatever budget items that we're gonna anticipate cut flow from those priorities?
Yep, so.
And I think, I, I mean, I'm just putting it out there, to consider a communication plan for, so that other commissions are kept apprised, whether it's, you know, one of us has to go to, you know, the, you know, we've split up whatever the commissions are, either present or.
Yep.
Put something in writing.
Yeah, it's good idea.
Okay. So, I have on my to-do list to reserve the room, get the agenda posted so that we are official, reach out to Westcog for, um, example, Town Center scopes and list of consultants, and share all of that information to you for our special meeting in two weeks, while taking out some time for Thanksgiving and.
Do you need help?
Um, you know, the, the arranging the room, the putting the agenda together, I mean, that's kind of on me now, since, um, you all elected me. Uh, one thing I will put on all of you is, who wants to be Secretary-Vice Chair? So, think about that, we can, uh, do it. Do you wanna do?
We're still gonna have a second meeting in December.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does someone have to do both? Secretary and Vice Chair?
That's the way the bylaws are written.
Yeah, that's the way it's written.
Yeah. Um, okay. So, we're kinda jumping around a little bit. I did want to spend a little bit of time, I wanna add regularly, a regular scheduled item on our agenda, planning issues for the Town of New Fairfield, that's something that we do in the Conservation in the Wetlands, uh, Commission. And I have several I wanna put forward for you. And, uh, Chris, I've got a bunch of links in here, I'll get you those links, so you can include it in a minute. So, and, you know, let me go through my list, and then if other people have planning issues for the Town of New Fairfield you wanna bring up, um, we'll add them, but I wanna get into that habit of, okay, what's, what should be on our, on our minds? Um, first of all, the P O C D references the Candlewood Valley Regional Land Trust as a partner in a number of, of initiatives in the P O C D. Um, they have merged into the Northwest Connecticut Land Conservancy, Conservancy. So, um, C V R L T is really been kind of a volunteer organization driven by, you know, volunteer, uh, service. Uh, National, Northwest Connecticut Land Conservancy is a, a professional organization, they've got paid staff. Um, they, they work throughout, uh, Northwest Connecticut, as you might imagine. Um, C R, C V R L T remains as part of, um, N C L C as an advisory board, focusing specifically on New Fairfield issues, so they continue, continue to put input. Uh, it was a week ago Saturday that Northwest Connecticut Land Conservancy held their, uh, annual meeting. It was here, and, and I attended. So, I did, um, I did make contact with the Chair of the Board of N C L C and the Executive Director, and I did share our Plan of Conservation Development with the Executive Director of, uh, the Northwest Connecticut Land Conservancy. So, um, so that, and, and after the holidays, we'll, we'll get together and talk about.
Cool.
Partnership opportunities. Also, at that meeting, uh, someone from Sherman mentioned that they have a really nice hiking trails pamphlet as a way to provide awareness around the trails in Sherman. And I took a look at it, it's really nice, and so I will, um, I'll give you the U R L for that, so I can go into the minutes, so we can all take a look. There's a story today, um, that Brookfield received six hundred and sixty thousand dollars to continue the Still River, Still River-Greenway Corridor from the Community Connectivity Grant Program. So, we're talking a lot about doing trail stuff in New Fairfield. We ought to have the Community Connectivity Grant Program on our radar screen. Couple weeks ago.
What is it called again?
Community Connectivity Grant Program. And, Chris, I'll make sure that, uh, you get all of this stuff for the minutes.
Is that a state grant?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, week and a half or so ago, there was a, uh, notice in the paper about Redding, um, doing their study plan for their Georgetown neighborhood. Uh, so I, I took a quick drive down to Redding to take a look at the Georgetown neighborhood. It's kind of at the intersection of Redding and Wilton and a couple of other towns there. What?
Is it off of Seven?
Yeah, it's a little bit off of Seven. There is, uh, Redding really doesn't, Redding has even less of a downtown than we do, right? And so, they, they, um, they got funding from the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Redevelopment Brownfield Program, cause they were dealing with the old factory, um, um, the Gilbert and Bennett Wire Mill.
Right.
Site. Um, they got two million dollars from E P A and two hundred thousand dollars from the state to, um, you know, do some remediation of that land. We don't have a lot of Brownfield area, maybe a little, no, anyway. Uh, but again, um, it, I thought it was very interesting, because, again, it's there. We need to take a look at what we want to become a town center and revi- and revitalize that, so, um, this hopeful, I was hoping to hop onto their Planning Committee, Commission meeting after our Conservation in the Wetlands, but realized that it was at seven o'clock, not eight o'clock, and so I missed it. The last one that I've got is from this last summer. There was an announcement, um, dealing with Connecticut's twenty-three point eight goals, Section twenty-three point eight goals, which is the plan to preserve twenty-one percent of the state, some six hundred and seventy-three acres as, um, open, open space, preserved land. Half of that is gonna be preserved by the state, half by partners. And that goal has been seventy, they're seventy-seven percent of, of the way of meeting that goal, which means there's still twenty, uh, you know, a quarter of that goal left to go. And they announced, um, a whole bunch of money going out to twenty-two towns, six new community greens, twenty-two, seventy acres of open space. This was the twenty-seventh round of Section twenty-three eight grants. There was some funding coming from the Open Space and Watershed Land Acquisition Grant Program, which is one bucket of money, and the Urban Green and Community Gardens Grant Program, which is another bucket of money.
All-state money.
All-state money. And so, um, I, I won't editorialize, but I think, um, there's lots of money that we should not be leaving on the table.
Yeah.
Uh, that would really help us, uh, move a needle forward on our P O C D, um, goals. So, you know, as, as I come across these, I will, um, bring them forward as planning issues for the Town of New Fairfield.
The Section twenty-three point eight grant, could we fi- can I look that and find it?
Yeah, should be able to. I, I will, um, there's, there's a portal for applying for the grants. Um, what was announced this summer was the twenty-seventh round of twenty, of Section twenty-three eight grants.
What's important to me is, um, how they define open space.
Yep, yep.
Cause that's really critical.
Right? And so, um, you know, in addition to this portal for applying to the grant, now, the twenty-eighth round was due November third. So, we've missed the twenty-eighth round?
We'll go for the twenty-ninth and thirty.
The twenty-ninth round, presumably is.
We'll be really ready for that.
So, again. So again, you know, we need to have, you know, a clear vision of what we want to accomplish, and then we need to...
And you mentioned town greens were part of it.
Town greens were part of it. Six new, six new community greens were part of what was announced this, so...
That's part of it, yeah.
Yep.
Cool.
So...
So the accepted proposal should be viewable, right?
Yeah, I've not been, I haven't been to the portal for applying for the grants. I just have the URL. And, you know, it's got to be, well, I would assume that they would all be listed somewhere other than just the press release, but yeah.
Yeah, if you could send me the URLs, then we can all, you know, deep dive when we get a chance.
Yep, yep. So any other planning issues for the town of New Fairfield? I'm putting you all on the spot because you're not ready to do this, but...
I mean, more generally speaking, I know a lot of people are asking about the new bill that just passed for the State of Connecticut.
Oh, the housing? Yep. Right. Yeah, well...
You know the one, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we all do.
So...
I think most of Connecticut is looking at that going, huh?
Yeah, so maybe some clarity on...
Sure.
Yeah.
We're working on making arrangements to have our land use attorneys brief, both zoning and planning, on the framework for zoning and planning. You've got a good overview here tonight, but they'll be able to answer some of your more legal questions like where does the appeal go for eight thirty G, that sort of thing, and provide more of a legal framework for some of the questions that you'll be dealing with, including the new housing bill, which is not a bill, it's a law. We have to comply. It's there. The other thing that you have to be mindful of is the Freedom of Information Act. And I think Pat is also making some arrangements for you to have a session on that. Basically, your question about can we kind of get together and do this without having a meeting? No.
No.
Under the Freedom of Information Act. And if you can't, a majority of you can't get together and talk, can't.
Yep.
So that's three.
That's a meeting. And if it's not noticed, it's an illegal meeting.
Yep. Unless it is only members of one party meeting together.
A caucus.
Yep. And so for, for the Planning Commission, we can have a caucus meeting. There are, for full members, two official Republicans and one alternate. So the three of you could meet.
So we can't meet on the eighth?
We can meet on the eighth because we will notice it as a special meeting.
Oh, okay.
We're opening that up to the public.
You can't have a meeting to that announcing.
No, 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 no.
Anyway, you know, I'm thrilled that there's so many new faces. But there are, there is a framework out there, and you've got, you've got a good start on it tonight. We're going to help you figure out the rest of the framework.
Perfect.
Awesome. Thank you.
So I think I've got a bunch of ideas for the agenda for our special meeting on the eighth, which will probably carry over to our regular meeting, including finalizing our budget request. Any, any last items for either of the upcoming meetings for the agenda?
Evan, is there anything going on in town that we should be aware of?
Should I forget, regulations finally, finally thrown in fact.
Okay, so I want to thank everyone for productive kickoff to the new team. And Noel, I think you're the only one who needs to set up your town email. So once you get that, you'll be added to the mailing list. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn?
I'll say.
Okay. By acclamation.